It's now 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the Regional Planning Commission Public Hearing for Thursday, March the 6th. And I said, like I said, it's 6:00 PM. As traditional, we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Mr. Mills if he'll lead us in a pledge. Thank you all for coming tonight and welcome. But I would like to ask that if you have a cellphone or electronic device that you either turn it off or put it on vibrate so it won't disrupt our meeting tonight. Sarah, I'll now come to you for roll call and determination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman?
President.
Mr. Servon?
President.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Galvry?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have seven present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Misters, you have in front of you tonight's agenda. If there's no deletions, additions, or any corrections, I'll ask for a motion and a second. Mr. Davis?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven is in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you so much again. I'll come right on back to you for the introduction and public hearing instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony on the applications before the planning commission. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. All statements are to be made from the podium at the front of the room. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion in the record. The record will remain open for two business days following tonight's hearing. For each application before the commission, the chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given 15 minutes to present the application. Following that, those in favor of the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Then those opposed will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the commission tonight. The commission will hold a public business meeting next Thursday, March 13th at 6:00 PM, at which time it will make a decision on the applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered, and a common vote of four members of the commission is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend to the business meeting, but no new public testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on February 12th, 2025, in the Delaware State News. And the Kent County Levy Court will hear these applications on Tuesday, March 25th at 7:00 PM unless tabled by the commission or withdrawn prior to the Levy Court hearing. The Levy Court also meets in this room. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll now get into the public hearing for tonight. First on the agenda is S L dash 25 dash 01, The Landings North. Its owner applicant, T J T L L C, 872 Walker Road, Suite A, Dover, Delaware. Engineer is Panani Associates Douglas Berry P E, 121 Continental Drive, Newark, Delaware. Present zoning district is A C. Heavy Court District is School District is Capital. Fire District is Station 53. Size of the site, total size is 186.60 acres. Proposed number of lots are 10. Active open space, none. Total open space, none. Stormwater management, none. Wetland area in the development, none. Total acres within woodlands, none. Maximum impervious coverage is 25%. And their treats will be public. It also has water, which will be private onsite wells and sewer, which is private onsite septic. Is there someone here to represent this application? Please come up and if you're not an attorney, you can give us your name and address, and you either be sworn or affirmed by our attorney.
Hello, my name's Doug Berry, professional engineer for Panoni Associates.
Can we, can we get him sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, sir. So yeah, thank you for your time this evening. Along with me here tonight is Jordan Ashburn and Lou Groves from Ashburn Homes. Ashburn Homes, T J T is the owner developer of the subject property.
Sir, could I ask you to keep the mic up closer because we-
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
No problem. So as you stated, The Landings North is a 10 lot subdivision on the north side of Fast Landing Road, about a quarter mile west of the incorporated limits of Lipstick. Some of you on the commission might recall a larger subdivision about 15 years ago that was approved. It's since expunged, and now Ashburn is seeking a much smaller development, again consisting of 10 single-family homes. On just the north side of the road, there's nothing proposed on the south side. Also, as you stated, individual lots will have wells and septic systems, and we have forwarded individual approved site evaluations from Denrick. A landscape plan incorporating 209 trees was provided in the packet. And as you stated, there is no open space, passive, but we do have an active recreation requirement of 0.5 acres. An appraisal was done. The fair market value of about a half an acre on this property is $10,000. So the developer's asking to dedicate $10,000 to the county for active recreational purposes. We are seeking four waivers as part of this project. I'll go through each one individually. So the first one is regarding the pole-mounted lights at the entrance. While the developer does intend to have lit signage at the entrance, he's asking for a waiver from the pole-mounted light requirement. Just given the rural feel of the community, we feel that is kind of outside, you know, the realm of what, you know, would be required for this property outside the growth zone. The second request for waiver is regarding street linkages. Per code, you're supposed to have certain amount of street linkages around the perimeter of your property assemblage. In this instance, the north side of the property is abutted by wetlands and floodplain associated with Dyke Branch. There's really not an opportunity for any street linkages. So we're respectfully requesting a waiver from that requirement. The third waiver request is from sidewalk along Fast Landing Road. And when this originally came through as a larger subdivision, we did something similar with Delott. They were okay with it. We gave them a fee in lieu of sidewalks for that application. So we're hopeful to pursue the same scenario with that. Excuse me, the last waiver request is regarding sidewalks on the internal subdivision streets. So we're hoping to implement a rural street section per code. And those are applicable when you have low traffic volumes. The 10 lot subdivision, you should only see about 66 trips per acre coming in. We have low density. We have flat topography, and we have the ability to increase the front yard setbacks for these roadside swales in lieu of curb and gutter and sidewalks. So that's the, the fourth we were requesting tonight. I did want to mention that the planning department did recommend conditional approval of the preliminary plans in addition to the four waiver requests, in addition to the proposed fee in lieu of active recreation. We've also met with Delott and the Kent Conservation District. Both those agencies are on board with what we're doing. We understand after tonight, we're going to have to work with them to get their letters of no objection before we come back with final site plan approval. So really, that's it from me. Again, the developer is here. With any questions, both of us would be happy to answer. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the other commissioners.
Sure.
I know the floodplains have changed in the last few years, and I don't think the wetlands have changed that much. But I noticed that your wetland delineation is 20 years old. Have you updated anything or checked anything verifying what's on the plot drawing?
We've poked around, but since the wetlands are farther out than the floodplain. So the floodplain is the, the differentiating factor here. So we're not touching the floodplain, hence we're not going to be touching the wetlands.
I also noticed on your typical drawing for your roadway, which is actually on sheet five of six, you're showing the subdivision street and how you're doing the underdrain and all like that. And you also say on here that if I have any questions about the, the underdrain and all, see note two. I noticed note two on the beginning legend doesn't have anything to do with this. Is note two actually located on a different part of the plot compared to where I'm looking?
Yeah, that, that's a standard Delott detail. There's a note regarding underdrains. Sometimes they're applicable, sometimes they're not. There's some testing we would have to do to eliminate that underdrain. So yeah, that's, that was just, I'm sorry, that was-
So the number two note doesn't exist or is not on the print or hadn't been updated?
It, it does not exist. That, that should have been omitted.
Okay. That's a correction you need. Now, for the drainage in the development itself, it's going to have swales draining to the pipes that's shown on the plot?
Yes, roadside swales that divert to the, I bet I'm gonna show you, but it kind of diverts to the northeast.
You can touch, you can touch down there on that map with your finger and a pointer or come up wherever you're trying to point to.
Everything's going to be diverted here and then out to the tidal confluence of the Dyke Branch via ditch. And we talked to Kent Conservation District about that, and they're, they're happy with, with our design.
Okay. I'll now open it up to any commissioners here who have any other questions besides what we've covered. Mr. Galvry?
The, each of these properties will have their own wells, correct?
Yes.
Are you stipulating any depth in terms of, in terms of the aquifer that you want them to tap into? And the reason why I'm bringing this up, I live in Little Creek down the road. And I was the one that brought up the issue of PFOS and our water supply, which now the whole town is considered contaminated. We'll be putting in new wells in every single house. We found that the, most of the houses were in shallow wells, mine included, and, and they're all PFOS contaminated. When they dug down deeper to the lower aquifer, one 100 foot below, that one comes up clean. So what the, the solution for our town is they're going to be doing, putting wells into that lower aquifer. And we have it into our, putting it into our code that any new development that has to put in a well goes down deep enough to get into that aquifer. So I'm, I'm wondering if you're going to make such requirements of your people, or have you tested the water in that aquifer? Because I think the whole watershed has a problem at this moment.
Right. So well designs kind of add on my expertise, but I can say he will be hiring a well consultant moving forward. The main thing is to keep those wells 100 feet away from your septic fields. And we're going to meet Denrick requirements. So if, if they require us to do what you were saying, then we'll, we'll have to do that. But yeah, that design is forthcoming.
Well, Denrick may or may not require it. They're just getting new onto this thing. But I, I think it would be in, in the best interest of anybody who's buying those homes, as part of disclosure, to let them know that there is contamination problem in the groundwater in that upper aquifer. So they should be knowing if you're not putting in the wells, they're going to put in the wells.
Correct.
So they should know what the expense of 100 foot well is, which is a lot different than a 35 or a 40 foot well.
Absolutely.
I do have one more question I forgot to ask, and I'll say if anybody else has any. But I noticed Delott reviewed this, correct?
Yes.
So they're not requiring any right turn or widening of the road or any left turn into this particular 10 lot development?
No, with 10 lots, traffic volume generated is pretty low. I said before, 66 trump trips coming in and 66 coming out is what we expect. So a total of 132 trips a day. So that doesn't necessitate any auxiliary lane improvements outside the standard 20 foot wide entrance and curb tapers.
And the other thing I wanted to ask is, do you agree with all staff recommendations and reports on what was in the pot?
That's that part. Absolutely. 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 Yes.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Davis?
I think I heard you say that you may have a separate septic system each lot. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You're going to have a separate septic system on each parcel, is that correct?
Correct. And he had individual septic evaluations done about five months ago. They've all been approved by Denrick.
What kind did they approve?
I'm sorry?
What type did they approve? Was it the standard system or mound system?
Uh, standard system.
Standard system, close to what land?
Yeah. Um, I don't have those. I have the, 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 the septic evaluations were circulated. The actual design comes later. So when, before they can get a certificate of occupancy or even a building permit, those are going to have to be designed. So right now, the septic evaluations is what we've done. The design will come later.
So they've approved the plans without having the whole package done yet. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying we know that each site can accept a septic system on it. They're about one acre in size. So issue of fitting it shouldn't be a problem. The type of system proposed is something that we're going to have to work through as the project progresses.
Because as you know, there's, there's several different types of systems, the mound system, standard system, all kinds of things. I'm, I'm really interested in what you're going to put there.
Yeah, well, there's existing septic systems out there now. I didn't know if, Jordan, if you want to-
We'll wait till we get in when you, when he comes up, he can be-
Okay, that's fine. So there's 30, there's 30 strip lots on that side of the fast landing road is right now, and they all have septic systems. The type, I don't know off the top of my head. When Jordan comes up, he can probably attest to that.
I'll actually see some documentation later on. Thank you.
Right.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Or Mr. Servon on the call in?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Yeah, I'm, of course, I'm in the school bus business, but, and what I'm looking at here is a row of houses all along that lane there. And I'm looking at a driveway going in to 10 lots there. And I see no place for kids being able to load out there along that road and making it dangerous for kids exiting the buses and even getting on the buses in the morning. Did Capital School District put their okay on this?
We submitted it per code. We have to submit the plans to Capital School District. I haven't seen any response to them. But I can say with a subdivision this small, I can't see why a bus wouldn't circulate through the subdivision rather than have it like a, a separate pickup station right on Fast Landing Road.
Well, I would say from what I know, that out there along Fast Landing Road, there should be a place put someplace in order for cars to come out of that, bring their kids out to the end of that road and have a place to turn around and give. We're having that problem all over this state everywhere where cars are coming out, bringing our kids out of the developments and developments are growing. Or that bus should be able to go in that development and turn around and come back out.
Right.
Is that going to take place and are these roads capable to handle?
Yeah, absolutely. They can come in and it circles around on itself and you can come back out to Flat, Fast Landing Road. But if the Capital School District has comments that they sent, I'll be happy to address them or talk to our client about how we can adequately address their concerns.
Well, Capital School District should. You say you notified Capital School District?
Yes. Painfully, I was some, I missed the green receipt, so that's why we're here two months later.
And they did not respond to it?
Not to me. I don't know if anything was sent to Kent County. So it's not Ms. Kiefer saying no.
Thank you, sir. I guess you're going to have the next gentleman come up that maybe can deal with Mr. Davis's questions on the types of sewer and all. We'll name your name and address. You can either be sworn or affirmed by our attorney.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jordan Ashburn. My address is 106 Port Rush Court, Dover, Delaware.
Mr. Ashburn, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give is the whole truth?
I do. So my soil scientist is named Bruce Bagley. He was out at the subdivision, proposed subdivision. He looked around and he told me everything was LPP or better. There is no man, sand mounds or innovative systems.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm a little hard to hear him up there. Could you speak a little louder and tell me what you're going, what you're going to put in there?
So according to Bruce Bagley, who is my soil scientist, he was out, he did the soil evaluations. He told me everything was LPP. There are no sand mounds, peat moss, or innovation.
Have you submitted that to Denrick for approval?
It has to go from him to Denrick, and they are the ones that have reviewed it. Yes, sir.
But today it's not been approved, right?
In order to get to this point, that has to be submitted and approved. But the soil evaluations have to be approved by Denrick. And then each individual spot, as we build out throughout the neighborhood, will be LBP, LPV cap and fill, that, that way. You know, the absolute best is gravity and then it's LPP, and then you move on to innovative systems.
So today, you've only had a verbal understanding. That's what's needed, but there's nothing in writing, anything on the plans that's been approved by Denrick. Is that correct?
The soil evaluations are approved by Denrick. Then the next step, as we pull the individual permits for the individual lots, the soil evaluation goes to the, the septic designer. The septic designer is the one who decides on all the different soil borings, where are the best spot to put the septic system and what type of septic system. It should be specific to those soil borings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does any other commissioners have any question for Mr. Ashburn? Mr. Servon, do you have any? Saying none, thank you, sir, for your comment.
Thank you so much.
I'm now opening up to the general public. Does anybody else here like to speak in favor of this project? Speak in favor of this project. Final call. Anybody like to come to the mic and speak in favor of this project?
If there's anyone that's joining us online and would like to speak in favor of this project, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. We'll go over to the, the ones against. Is there anybody that's against this particular project and would like to speak at the mic? Come on up and give us your name and address, and you can either be sworn or affirmed.
Larry Emerson. I live at-
Hold the mic. There you go.
Larry Emerson. I live at 2577 Fast Landing Road. I'm actually on lot three on this plot plan.
Mr. Emerson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth?
Yes, sir. So I am not in favor of this project. I wasn't in favor of this project years ago when it came before this council, mainly for some of the reasons you brought up. I've had two septic systems on my lot. Both are gravity-fed systems. Both fail when it rains hard. Happens periodically through the year. One of my biggest concerns right now is the area behind our house and these lots. They do flood out. And when the flooding is there, it stays there for a couple of weeks. I actually have pictures of the last time that it flooded back in, this was probably about a year ago. This was taken in a December timeframe. I have some neighbors that are with me here. Their lot has flooded out more than once in the past probably 15 years that I've been there. I've got pictures of that as well. You'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
If, if I were to ask you to turn it over to Sarah here, she can make copies and turn it over to the rest of us. Is that the end of your presentation?
Uh, yeah, well, the other, the other part that I have is with where this is going, if this does go through, the, the water that's going to come out. I mean, where is it actually going to go? I mean, I see that it's, it's coming down and out, out to the road. That road at that end of the street floods down to our end of the street. So you're just pu, you're just pushing water from that area further down to our area. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I assume one of you want to come up and give us your name and address, and you can be sworn or affirmed.
David Iggen?
Hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. I, I think they had a question for you, sir.
Need to pinpoint his lot. Which lot was he talking about?
He said lot 10.
Lot three.
Lot three.
Right.
Is it on the north side or south side of the road?
It's on the north side of the road.
Can you see it from that particular plot?
Uh, not from this, from this plot plan because it's cropped. If you go out a little bit, um, more close to, uh, what is it? Like the, um, south to this.
Okay, so it'd be lot three, Mr. Mills.
That doesn't answer the question on this map here. Where is your lot?
You can't show it. It does not big enough to show.
Yeah, it's not big enough to show. I think it's on a page, I think I saw it on page two.
Do you have that marked? I don't think they have it. We'll look into that.
Okay.
And we'll look at your drawings. Thank you. Sir, can you give us your name and address?
David Iggen, 2551 Fast Landing Road.
Mr. Iggen, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. It's my house next to him that's been flooded the same way. My septic has been flooded in heavy rains.
Does this particular, you can put your finger on that map down there. You, you can use a pointer. Can you slide the pointer to where your lot's at? And the other gentleman is right next to you?
Yes.
Okay.
It also comes from across the street. The farmlands comes down the road and comes right down my driveway as well.
Okay.
And well, you are, he's got a picture of that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, hold on, sir. You got a question for this gentleman, Paul?
I guess this is my septic, my questions. What, what, what type of system do you have?
I have a 1,500 gallon, a three, three, the biggest system down there, I'm told.
Is it standard system?
Yes, it's gravity.
How long have you lived there?
Since 2012.
Since 2012. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you want to give your name and address? Or you're just with him? Support.
And thank you very much. I'm just a homeowner. I just know, I'm out there-
You can't say anything unless you get sworn and affirmed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much then. Third and final call. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak against this project? Anyone else? Come on up and give us your name and address. You could be sworn in or affirmed. You can go right there, sir. Put the mic right up to your face.
Carl Stevens, 26-
Pull the mic up.
Carl Stevens, 2699, Fast Landing Road. Mr. Stevens, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. Um, we live 2699, and we really enjoy the geese and the deer that we see crossing that field on many occasions. And I, particularly where the other layout showed where the houses are going to be, there are quite a bit of geese and wildlife that can come into that area every year that we really enjoy, and we will surely miss them. That's all.
Anybody have any questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, I have a question.
Hold on, sir.
I'm going to ask about the same question. Where do you live in, in relationship to this development proposed?
You might have to go over to the other one over here, sir, and you point on that screen, if you don't mind.
And while you're walking over there looking for that, the next question is, what kind of system do you have? And have, have you had any problems with flooding up there that's affected your drainage?
First of all, point out your lot with the pointer.
That's it, right there.
Thank you.
Uh, that's, that's where we live, right there. So the lot's basically in our backyard. Where the pointer is now is where the geese and all usually land, and the deer cut usually from here across to here. So they're back and forth. We see them several times a year. We've lived there since 2009. We have a, I don't know the exact size of our system, but we have it serviced frequently. We've never had any problems with it. But we have seen flooding in area where the arrow is now on occasion, when it's, you know, excessive rains.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. The last call for anybody I'd like to speak against. If I have anybody else besides this gentleman, would we use your mind, come up and stand in the back of him so I know I've got somebody else that wants to? Give us your name and address. Pull the mic up to your face, please.
Name's John Verden. I am on the farm 2486 Fast Landing Road, also 2297 Fast Landing Road on this image.
Sir, sir, if I may, do you swear or affirm-
Yes.
-that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I live on, I live on the farm next door here. Also, on the farm on the opposite side of the road as well, combined two parcels. I'm letting you know that right here has been an LPP system I just installed for a house that's going to be going there. I had that gone through. I have not ran that yet. I've, I've asked about the standard to let me do with the LPP there. I also, living on this farm, that there, know that there's flooding right on the end of the road on the corner there, and it does go towards these farms or these houses as well. The, the, with me letting you know that is the flooding, the, the plane of that land pushes the water in that direction. So what I understand is there will be a swell there, if I am I correct with the word, ditch there, that'll- a ditch there that'll allow the water to go that way. But in my knowledge, that it does catch in this area here. And there is a high point right here that stops that. And I've seen what they're saying with the water going across the property, and in their front yards as well. Also, there's flooding, when it floods, from the high land in the high level. These houses, these houses right here, I'm sorry, right here, do get water in their front yard very often. And there is flooding that happens right here on the corner of the road as well. I cannot vouch for anything on that end. The flooding also, it's built up on that part as well. Just so you guys are aware of what I've seen with the water and how it responds to storms and high floods. All of that right there gets flooded as well on a high tide and high water surges. I just let you guys know with those.
Any questions for this gentleman? Saying none, I thank you for your present. Uh, hold on, I got one from Mr. Peterman.
What's, what kind of systems you say you're installing?
I have just installed LPP, LPP system.
You don't have no mound system?
I do not have a mound system.
And you know all that low water's there?
I have water that goes in the front by the road here. The LPP is in a higher section right above that. So the way the ground hits, the water's in the front along the road. And where the LPP got put is on a higher spot in the mound. There's also a water, a ditch, a water plain that comes along the road in an image, and it goes right into that lowland there. But a lot of the water does follow the water line, or the road line right across in that front there, too. There's a very low spot, so it goes into the ditch and along the road as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Galvray?
Your knowledge of that area behind where actually the development is going to go. So if I understand you correctly, there's an elevation in that road somewhere about midway down there where you said that, yeah, where you, so basically that water doesn't go higher than that. It kind of puddles down. I'm quite familiar with this kind of condition. I live in Little Creek, where the dry part of the sponge. So what I'm curious about with your knowledge, because I can't see the topography there, is there any higher elevations in this area where the development is going to go? Or is that lower?
The, this area here-
Yes.
Is all flat and is pretty decently height. You can see pretty much with the photo here that it does, it does have low area around the outside of it. But all of this area is a flat surface.
And is it higher than the houses that are on the, along the road?
If it is, it's not by much. But again, the water is, goes along the road and-
I'm just trying to, I'm just curious as to which way the water is going to run off, whether it goes into the stream, it goes into the lipstick, or whether it goes towards the road.
It seems like the water will follow this. If they have dug a ditch, it will follow that mainly. It does not puddle in the middle of the field there.
It doesn't, okay. That was what I was curious about. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, sir. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Seeing nobody else to comment on this, we'll be taking this project up next week. Thank you all for your comments.
Mr. Chair?
I have somebody online?
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in opposition to SL 2501, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. No hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Once again, we'll be taking this project up next week. Thank you all for your comments. Next on our business meeting tonight is application entitled CS-25-04, First State Animal Center and SPCA, Inc. Owner, applicant is First State Animal Center and SPCA, care of John Pirana, 32 Shelter Circle, Camden, Wyoming, Delaware. Contacts are Bear, Mendalis, Rockstead, and Federico. Care of John Partee, 6 South State Street, Dover, Delaware. Engineer is Becker Morgan Group, Inc. Care of Jay Michael Reiman, 309 South Governors Avenue, Dover, Delaware. Zoning district is AR. Comprehensive mat designation is low density. Relationship to the growth zone is outside. Present use is residential and agriculture. Proposed use is commercial kennel. Levy Court District is the six, Mr. Hertz. School District is Capital. Bar District is Hartley Station 51. It's actually 11.4854 acres on the west side of Hartley Road. Is there anybody here to represent this project? I think we might know this gentleman. Shocked me. Now, are you an attorney also?
I'm not, I'll swear.
Okay, are you going to speak first? You'll have to be sworn or affirmed.
Sure. My name is John Volkowski. I'm with Becker Morgan Group, civil engineer for the project. I'm at 309 South Governors Avenue, Dover, Delaware.
Sir Volkowski, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give here this evening is the truth?
I do. And Mr. Partee is passing out packets, letters of support for the application.
Okay, sir, you can go ahead and start with your presentation if you'd like.
All right, well, thank you for having us this evening. Here on behalf of First State Animal Center and SPCA, I have a presentation here for you. Ms. Kiefer is bringing up. And I forget which one advances the slides. Large one, there we go. Thank you. So just to get everyone's bearings straight, this project is in Hartley, Delaware, located on the south side of Hartley Road there. You see surrounded in the yellow outline with the big star. Just west of Halltown Road, you can see the surrounding areas are mostly wooded areas, agricultural and some residential. There is some commercial properties to the east. Just off the page, there's a Royal Farms. There's also a scrap metal facility there. This parcel is just under eleven and a half acres. It's existing, it's zoned AR. And its existing use is, like you said, agricultural and residential. And proposed use tonight, we're here for a conditional use site plan for a commercial kennel. A little bit about First State Animal Center. While we are here for a commercial kennel, that's, that's not exactly what this facility is in the sense of a commercial kennel. This facility is for farm animals, and their mission statement right at the top there is to prevent cruelty and suffering to the animals and to protect and enhance the quality for life for these farm animals. They are nonprofit, 501(c)(3), funded with private donations, and the Department of Agriculture for the care of these animals. These animals are farm animals that are pastured at the property. They're animals that have been abandoned, neglected, abused, and housed at this facility to basically nurse them back to health and then return to useful farm life. They could return to farm life. They could also stay at the facility if they're at the, you know, near end of life. So these animals listed there, they do include typical livestock you would see on a farm or an agricultural use. There are cows, horses, pigs, goats, sheep, dogs, and fowl. This facility, unlike your typical commercial kennel use, this is not open to the public. This is not a facility you can bring your dog to board here. There are no customers. The only people allowed in this facility are employees of the facility. So this is the existing site here. You can see it's mostly pasture from the pictures on the application that was up at the beginning. There is a post and rail existing fence around the property. There's an existing driveway that goes to the pointer here, existing barn that's located here. And then there's an existing residential dwelling that you see right here. There is a gravel driveway and an existing access to access the facility. So we're here tonight for the preliminary, oh, for, I'm sorry, the conditional use site plan for this facility. With the conditional use site plan, there are some conditions to make this property code compliant for a commercial kennel. And those are listed in blue on the screen there, and I'll just highlight them. We did provide a significant landscape buffer around three sides of the property. The south side of the property is completely wooded, so not needed there. We have taken the tree requirement for the plantings of one tree per 3,000 square foot of development area, along with the buffer trees. And we've consolidated them all to the buffer to provide a much enhanced buffer than your typical buffer you would see. That allows the rest of the property to be used functionally for pasture for the animals on this property. We are also proposing to get rid of the post and rail fence, sorry, and replacing that with an opaque, six-foot-tall vinyl fence. Again, keeping the gated entry, this is a secure facility. The gravel road that you see that accesses the barn and the residential structure will be widened to be a 24-foot-wide road. And we will also add an ADA accessible parking space at the facility should one of the employees need such provisions. So this use does have four conditions in Chapter 205, 67G. Those four conditional use conditions are listed on the left, and we do meet them all. That is that all kennels and runs located 100 feet from adjoining property or 300 feet from a dwelling unit. This project doesn't propose any commercial runs. It's not that type of facility. But the kennel, if you would, if you would call the barn that, would be 100 feet from any adjoining property line. The residential unit on the property will serve as where the caretaker lives. So there will be a 24-hour caretaker on the property at all times. There is no proposed lighting, but any existing lighting that is there is shining away from any adjacent properties. And then the barn itself is being renovated to provide additional insulation and sound attenuation to meet the OSHA Act. We've also requested two waivers tonight. They are sidewalk along the front edge. So Hartley Road is considered an arterial classification with Deltat. So in the code, you would typically put a sidewalk along the front edge and another waiver for access from that sidewalk into the facility. We've requested that waiver since this, this use is not open to the public. No pedestrians would come from Hartley Road to walk into the facility. It's a gated, secure facility. There are no existing sidewalks along the front edge of Hartley Road that this could connect to. And if, if we do not put the sidewalk there, it will not have any effects on the nature of the zone, the character of the immediate area. Like I said, it's mostly residential, agricultural in use. We were in receipt of the staff recommendation report. We agree with all recommendations in that report. Just note that it does recommend conditional approval of the project and does recommend approval of the waivers as well. With that, happy to take any questions.
I do have a couple of questions before I turn it over to the other commissioners. The residential dwelling, I see you have two spots for handicapping, two for employees. But I don't see any parking spots over by the residential dwelling. Are you going to be placing any cars on that area by the residential dwelling? That you're going to use it for staff?
Excuse me. So we have three parking spaces, two for employees and one for the residents.
Okay, but over by the residential dwelling, you're not showing any stoned area or parking area or anything like that? So nobody would be parking over there, is that correct?
Correct.
The other only question I have is, on the right-hand side of the drawing there where the neighbor has that, the Clendaniel property, what is that building right along the property line in back? If you put your finger down there, I'll slide your arrow over to it. Yeah, that one.
Not sure. I don't know if Mr. and Mrs. Clendaniel's here tonight.
We'll find out then, I guess.
We can find out. It is 100 feet. If it is a residential dwelling, we are 100 feet. We're well over 100 feet, several hundred feet away from that dwelling unit.
We'll see if we can find that answer as we get. I think Mr. Davis has a question.
Yes. Did I understand you correctly that you're not going to have dogs out there? Did I hear you correctly or not? Will you have dogs in the kennels?
There will be some dogs, yes.
What do you consider some?
So we're right now looking at 15 animals total. Like I said, that includes the livestock, horses, cows, goats. There could be dogs. There's not a set number of dogs. It could be, you know, up to a handful. We don't have exact numbers on, on the dogs. But there, there would be, if there was a farm dog that needed help, it was an abused, neglected animal of that sort, it would be, it could be kept here as a, as a farm dog.
I, um-
But not a domestic pet.
I called one of the members of the board on SPCA because I was out there on the board 15 years. I was building chairman of the building. And it concerned me that we spent all that money. It sounded at first like they were going to sell it and move to this location. And I was told that the reason why they want the location is that the current location in Camden is being changed over to use veterinaries to use. They have a veterinary service out there, and they're running out of space. I quizzed them about out here, and they just said dogs. I know they're going to have dogs out there. I would only assume all the people sitting in here, that's their issue. We've had these things before, the kennels. When you say kennels, dogs bark. That's why I asked the question, so you don't really know if it's going to be 10, 15, 20, 25 at some point down the road, do it.
There, there's no set number, but I, we can guarantee it's not 25 plus dogs in the sense of a typical commercial kennel that you've heard in-
But it could happen, because you got a lot of land out there. It's a nice setting for larger animals. So, um, that's, I just wanted to justify that question, because I was asked the same question by someone else. So thank you, you know, thank you very much.
Sure. And Mr. Propp is here tonight. He could also help answer some questions about the program itself if you have additional questions.
Okay, before I turn it over to another question up here, it says in here on one of the code requirements that we require 24-hour security, security with a caretaker on duty. Is that actually a physical place, a person on duty at that site for 24 hours a day? Seven days a week?
The caretaker would live at that facility, so.
So that's what you said. I was just clarifying to myself. I think Mr. Peterman down here has a question.
On, on this proposal, it says First State Animal Center and SPCA. Are you partnering with the SPCA? Is this an extension of the SPCA?
I'll let Mr. Pirana speak to that. That's-
That's what Mr.-
That is, that is the, the name, yeah.
I could probably answer that question. I was on the board 15 years.
There you go.
It used to be known as Kent County SPCA. Later on, the state of Delaware took over animal control business. And subsequently, they changed the name First State. And they were basically in the adoption business with dogs. That's really the change. I mean, it's the SPCA's property, but that's why they changed the name, Commissioner.
But you're going to have this. You're not going to have no people, no customers out there adopting dogs or cats or birds or anything?
No.
I think you have a question for the gentleman at the mic? Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Garvey.
I'm not sure. If you can't answer, you'll tell me. I have, I have a few questions. It's, I think it's the kind of housekeeping questions, but they're on my mind. So is there any kind of carrying capacity in terms of? I know that you've got a rather large cross-section of animals, so. But I'm just kind of curious, is that at any given time, there could be at its max, you know, are we looking at more than 100 animals, more than 50, less than?
And if Mr. Pirana can speak to this, but I believe it was 15 animals, but I-
15, 15 animals total.
Right now, yes.
Okay. All right, that, that's rather small. I've actually, I thought it would be a much larger number. And the other thing is, is that, is this a, other than injury or diseases, is it no kill shelter?
Again, I'll defer the program questions to Mr. Pirana.
Okay, then maybe I got program questions. All right, thank you.
I think next is Mr. Partee would like to come up and say something. And he will not have to be sworn or affirmed, being he's an attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. For the record, John Partee with the law firm Roxette Mendalis Federico here in Dover.
For the record, John Partey with the law firm Roxette Mendalas Federico here in Dover. Just to try to address Commissioner Davis's question, this facility is an animal sanctuary for farm animals. It is not a commercial kennel. That's the closest phrase in the county code that comes close to describing what happens here. But it's not commercial, because it's not open to the public, and they don't board animals. And it's not even a kennel. They don't have, you know, an actual kennel. With regard to dogs, I mean, there are a few dogs occasionally, as you would find on any typical farm, but there are no more than about 15 animals there right now. I can't see, given the purpose of the facility, to pasture livestock, that there would be any more than 20 animals on this property at any given time. But it's certainly not the intention to kennel dogs at this facility. That's not what it's for. It's for livestock and neglected animals that you would typically see on a farm. I think it would be helpful to you to ask some questions of Mr. Piranha, who is here. He can answer more specifically the operational questions. So I invite that. And he can also answer the question about the affiliation with the organization. But thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Partey?
I don't have a question. I just want to confirm. That's why I was asking those questions, because I really knew that answer, and I wanted to get it on the public record, that it's not a place where we store a bunch of dogs. That's why I asked that question.
That's exactly right, Commissioner Davis. And I can understand and appreciate that, you know, the public doesn't know exactly, that there hasn't been a facility like this out there. And so it's understandable that they would have questions. But we're here to assure you, and Mr. Piranha can assure you as well, this is not going to be a commercial kennel. It's not going to be a haven for dogs. It is a animal sanctuary for neglected and abused livestock. Will there be a couple of dogs from time to time? Yes, just like you would see on any farm. But the purpose of the facility is to rehabilitate livestock. So if there are no other questions for me, maybe Mr. Piranha could address that.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Peterman?
If this isn't going to have no customers, how do you plan to get rid of these animals, to get more animals?
I'm sorry, how do, we what?
If you're not going to have no customers, and it's not going to be open to any of the public, how are you going to get rid of these animals to get rid of, to get more animals?
So again, Mr. Piranha can probably answer the lifespan of the animals and how they're brought in and how they leave. It's primarily a Department of Agriculture program, so I think that's a question that he could answer better than I could.
Okay, can we get the gentleman up to the mic?
Thank you.
And we'll have him sworn or affirmed. So thank you, Mr. Partey.
Good evening, everyone. John Piranha, 3174 Arthursville Road, Hartley Residence in Delaware.
Mr. Piranha?
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Can you first address Mr. Peterman's question about what happens to the animals and their longevity at the site?
Absolutely. The animals that will be in the sanctuary, and as we know, a sanctuary is typically a safe haven for animals. I don't think there's any dispute about that. There will be no animals there whatsoever that are stored or up for adoption or anybody coming in to see them. We house well over 100 dogs or are capable at the Camden Shelter in order to answer your question, sir. Yes, we are putting up a veterinary clinic. That is not taking away from our 100-plus dogs. As a matter of fact, this spring, we're adding 50 more kennels. The reason we're doing that is we have an organization in the state called Brandywine Valley, who typically every two months brings in 1,100 dogs that are getting sold to the public in Delaware. This organization claims they're rescuing them, but what they're doing is they're overloading the state with these dogs. If you go to return a dog to Brandywine Valley, they tell you, right here in Dover, we don't take it back. And if you leave it with us, it is in risk of euthanasia. Take it over to First State Animal Center. We get literally 50 of those at least every month. We know if those dogs go back to Brandywine Valley, since they're also an out-of-state organization, chances are they will get euthanized because the state is overloaded with dogs. So we are adding on to accommodate those dogs. So in answer to that question, we're staying there in full force as we have operated or going to operate and expanding the operation in Camden to house more of these animals that are adoptable. Sanctuary is going to be for unadoptable animals, not aggressive animals, farm animals
Is it only 20 will be on this farm than anyone else?
I don't know. That's not my project.
To answer that question. Okay, anybody else have any questions for this young lady?
Just if I could chime in, you could put a condition under recommendation that the limit's at 20.
Yeah, that could be included with our motion. When we get ready to pass it, that could be included in our motion.
That'd be okay.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. Really appreciate it. Anybody else would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come up and give us your name. Ma'am, he's got up first, so I'm going to honor him, and I'll come to you, okay? Sir, give us your name and address, and you'll be sworn or affirmed.
Yes, sir, thank you. For the record, Sean Lynn, State Representative Dover. My address is 411 Legislative Avenue, Dover, Delaware 19901. Happy to swear or affirm.
I find it difficult to swear or affirm a member of the General Assembly, but do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give here today is the truth?
I do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak here this evening on behalf of what I think we all agree is a very valuable project. I come out tonight to speak in support of this, in support of First State Animal Center. This is a zero nuisance use, unlike other small farms, or like other small farms, and I give it my stamp of approval and would ask that you do the same. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any commissioners have any questions for this gentleman? Seeing none, once again, I thank you for taking the time to come.
Thank you, everyone.
Anybody else like to come to the mic, young lady? I think you're next. You're her bodyguard. I can see that now. So if I could have your name and address, you can be sworn or affirmed.
Aubrey Mastin, 517 Gumbush Road, Townsend, Delaware.
Ms. Mastin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. Okay. As being what people call me Santa Falls, which is something that I do during Christmas time, to go a little bit more into that, I raise money all year round to buy blankets, treats, and toys for animals who don't have a home during Christmas. And basically, we go to shelters and donate what we got for that shelter. I have been donating to First State SPCA since I was eight, and they have been my favorite shelter out of all the ones that I have donated to. And then when I'm older, I was to work with them. I believe that by using this land, the large animals that aren't able to be at a normal shelter that you would usually see will be able to live out their lives or be there temporarily to be treated well and given the care that any of us humans would need if we were deeply sick until ready to be sent back to a bigger shelter or adopted as farm animals again. And I believe that it would be better than having to euthanize them.
That's all? Oh, very good, very good. You might be, thank you all. You might be taking Mr. Lynn's place someday. It's hard to tell, so. Ma'am, would you like to be sworn and affirmed to say something?
Yes, my name's Linda Hyne, Towns in Delaware.
And do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Make sure you pull the mic up to your face there.
Okay, I'm just going to be real quick. I'm Santa Falls's mom, grandmom. Very, very proud of her, for both. First State's been one of our favorite hubs. We do rescue work ourself. We mainly do feline. Of course, we try to do some socialized helping to get the cats out to be re adopted. I also lived in Hartley. All my life, I lived in Hartley. And Hartley is Amish country, farm country. And I remember, and if anybody lives out in Hartley knows anything about Hartley, when you open your windows and you take a breath of fresh air, all you smell is horse dew. So, you know, this facility that they're trying to build, it's right down the road from a scrapyard. That's an eyesore. But my thing is, is Amish, you've got the puppy mills. We all know what that's about. And that's sad. This place takes in a lot of these puppy mill. What they're doing is fabulous, fabulous thing. And I don't see what the means that they're doing to try to make this a very pretty and nice thing. We're going to be the first one signed up to volunteer out there, and I think you guys should really consider.
And thank you. Anybody have any questions for this lady? You ought to want to congratulate your granddaughter. She did a fantastic job. Anybody else here would like to speak in favor of this project? Please come up, give us your name and address.
My name is Jennifer Wright, and I'm at 14 Briar Lane, Dover, Delaware.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, sir. So I've had the pleasure of being involved with First State since 2022. And as Dr. Lopez mentioned, we have been taking on a lot of the cruelty cases from the Department of Agriculture. I have been involved in care of every one of those cases since I have been there since 2022. It's really hard to put into words the condition that a lot of these animals come in, but a lot of them are really bad. A lot of them require not only a lot of extensive medical care, but just basic things as refeeding. To give an example, when you give the body condition score of a horse, it goes, the lowest being one, the highest being like five. A lot of these cases come in at a body score condition of one, maybe two at best. So these animals require a very extensive refeeding program. The first case that I was involved in was a horse that was a body condition score of one and had to be fed every two hours around the clock. So myself, coworkers, my husband, you know, we were out there every two hours all through the night caring for this animal. Having somebody on site 24/7 and being in the position where they have eyes on them 24/7 would be very helpful and would really aid in their survival and their rehabilitation. I've had the pleasure of, you know, taking in one of these horses that came from a neglect case. We would have taken in two, but unfortunately, sadly, one of them didn't make it. And that's only one of, you know, the unfortunate outcomes that I've witnessed since being there. So having a facility like this to aid in not only horses, but goats, pigs, fowl, you know, like Mr. Piranha mentioned, you know, a dog that needs, you know, injections at a certain time of day, throughout the day, or whatever, a facility like this would be, I mean, there's really no words to describe how important a facility like this would be in the outcome of these animals. I can understand, you know, some of the terminology used and some of the wording in these things. I can understand how there would be concern, but not once since I've been there have I encountered an animal that was dangerous. I've never been in a position where, you know, these animals were a danger. So I just, I hope that people can consider how important a facility like this would be in these situations.
Well, we thank you for your presentation. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, once again, thank you for coming to the mic.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to speak in favor of this project? Third and final call? I think we all know what you all want to say anyway, so we've already taken that into consideration. So we're going to go over to the against side. Is there anybody here that's against this project and would like to speak? Please come up and give your name and your address, and you'll be sworn or affirmed.
Jason Gary, 3136 Hartley Road.
Mr. Gary, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Please pull the mic up to your face. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
My concern isn't with what they're trying to do, but if you make it a kennel, what they could do with it. So if you do the conditional use of limiting the number of animals and dogs, I really don't have a problem with it. I've lived there my entire life, property butts up to this property. There's been livestock on that property almost the entire time. So it's more concern of the numbers it could be if you make it a kennel. So even though they say they're not going to, but it could possibly.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Mr. Galvory?
I just want to be clear. So you're saying that if there was a cap, like what we were talking about a little earlier, of 20 animals, and that was written into the conditions?
Yes.
And if into the conditions was that it was not going to be turned into a kennel at some point in the future? You would be okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for coming to the mic. Anybody else like to speak against this project? Please come up to the mic, give us your name and address, and you could be sworn or affirmed.
Hello. My name is Quentin Smart, 2856 Hartley Road. I literally live like a couple doors down.
Mr. Smart?
You're going to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay. I just recently retired from the Air Force after 33 years. My wife and I have spent the last five years creating our little backyard oasis that's basically have a clear view of that entire property and the properties surrounding it. And one of the biggest concerns that I have is the noise of dogs. There's been horses there forever, never had a problem. We've had, our neighbor has, have had goats at one point. But my biggest problem I have is the number of animals and the possibility of dogs. I've listened to testimony here tonight, and a lot of people that don't live in an immediate area is speaking in favor of. But these are the people that surround that area, and none of them want to have that in their front or backyard.
We thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Galvory?
When you say want to have that in their yard, what is that?
The facility with the possibility of an absorbent amount of animals. Yes, I hear they say 10 to 15 animals now, but I've been there since 2000. I've been there for the last 25 years. It's always the possibility, if it's labeled a kennel, that they say 15, and next thing you know, they get an influx, 50, 75, who knows? There's no limits.
So again, so again, I get back, it's, right now, it's not labeled a kennel, and it's not intended to be a kennel. So, and it's not intended to be a kennel for dogs. So if the conditional use was that it could not be a kennel for dogs, that it had to stay as it's been described to be, and there was a cap on the amount of animals, which wouldn't be dogs, which would be 20, you would be okay with this?
Yes. No dogs and a cap on the number of animals? No problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, once again, sir, I thank you. Anybody else speaking against this project and would like to come to the podium? Nobody's, okay? We'll take you first, ma'am, because she's got to get up farther. Go right ahead. Get up and give us your name and address, and you could be sworn or affirmed.
My name is Sharon Geier. Address is 2895 Hartley Road.
Ms. Geiger, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. I pretty much wanted to say the same thing that Quentin just said. I don't have any problems with any farm animals being across the street to me at all. The problem lied, was lying, sorry, I'm very nervous, of the dogs.
You're doing fine. Just, you'll be fine. Take your time.
Okay. I didn't want the dogs for a lot of reasons across the street. I mean, it's loud, stinky, you name it. I've worked in this animal shelter myself for 10 and a half years, so I'm a huge animal lover. I gave a large part of my life to it, and I own a lot of animals now, including horses, chickens, cats. But like I say, I just don't want a lot of noise coming from over there. That's one thing. The other thing that bothers me, as Mr. Piranha said himself, someone had brought up the way it looks. She wanted to be able to go out into her driveway and see a farm view. And we're going to be met with this big six-foot wall with giant trees growing in front of it that kind of looks like a government installation, top secret, or something. looks like a government installation, top secret or something of the sort. We would like to have it remain a farm and look like a farm. And if these are all farm animals on this property, the farm fencing that is already there should be sufficient. It had been for many, many years. So they were my main things, I guess.
See, you did a great job. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for this young lady? Seeing none, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you can come on up now. If you'd like to give us your name and address, you can talk. This is for the against part.
I'm Natasha Cole. I live at 2929 Hartley Road. I literally live right across the street.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. Like I said, I literally live right across the street. I have two small children, two and 10. My 10-year-old is autistic and has ADHD. So I'm completely fine with it being a farm. I've lived there since '07. So my oldest has grown up across the street from farm animals. My two-year-old likes looking out at them and when the horses were there and seeing them running and stuff. So as long as there's a cap on it, like you said, with, you know, it not being a kennel, I'm completely, I'm completely fine with that. My, like I said, my oldest has autism and ADHD, and if it were to be a kennel, even though there are six-foot fencing, dogs can clear that. I've grown up with dogs my entire life. I know what they can clear. So with him not, wouldn't be able to understand if a dog was friendly or not. Let's say it were to get out or what have you, how would you know? Like I said, I have two small children. Other people that live next door to me have kids and grandkids and stuff like that. So long as there remain farm animals, you know, horses, cows, chickens, stuff like that, I'm completely fine with it.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for this young lady? Once again, thank you for coming up. Anybody else would like to speak in against this project? This will be the, okay. Come right up, ma'am, and give us your name and your address.
Louise Kennedy, 2961 Hartley Road.
Ms. Kennedy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. I live right across the street.
Ma'am, get close to the mic, please.
I live right across the street. And my concern is the animals. Are they going to be dangerous? I have a special grandson. He lives with me, and he does not talk. And if these animals get out, are they going to be dangerous? I mean, I love animals, but my concern are the animals going to be dangerous when they get out. I've had dogs, and when they get loose, they go out in the road, and a car hits them. And believe me, the cars go fast on that road. And I live on a very, very bad curve, and there've been many, many accidents out there. I've had my mailbox. The other neighbors have had their mailboxes down. Like I said, it's very dangerous out there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for this lady? Mr. Peterman, I think, has a question?
Yes, sir.
It's really not a question, it's a comment. That proposed animal care system there had nothing to do with tearing down a mailbox. Does it have nothing to do with the accidents?
Well, if the animals get loose, sir, if the cars go by there, they're going to get hit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, ma'am, for coming up. This is the last call for anybody that'd like to speak against this project. Please give us your name and your address.
Stephen Downs, 2989 Hartley Road. I read directly across from this proposed project.
Sir, do you swear or affirm?
Yes.
That the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I'm against the project. I've been there, lived here for 45 years. I was there before there was anything on that farm. So I was told by their personnel, I guess that's who they are, that there was only going to be 10 dogs housed there, and that was going to be it. He said it was rare that they weren't going to have any large animals there. And the guy came right to my house, and I got in his car and rode over with him, and he showed me the facility. So I think they need to get what they're going to do straight before they try to, you know, get approval for something that I don't think they even know what they want to do themselves. And another thing I was trying to figure out, he was showing on the screen about putting a curb out on the street. Now, to me, that doesn't even make sense, especially on that road. If you've ever been out there on that road, there's, that's senseless to put a curb out there, to me.
I think you're talking about the one previous project before this one. It's not this one's going to have the curb and all of it.
I thought he said something about putting a curb out there.
No, there's nothing out there.
Or sidewalk, the sidewalk.
We're going to give them leeway from that where they don't have to construct that.
Don't have to put the sidewalk in?
Well, I'm not speaking for all of them. We're going to take that up next week at the business meeting. They've asked for waivers on different things, and that's one of the waivers they want.
And to me, for me to get up every morning and have to look, like the other lady said, to have to look at this big tall fence every morning, I think that's, you know, that shouldn't be. You're in the country. This is farmland. You don't put a solid fence around farmland. That doesn't even, it doesn't even make sense. And just like widening the driveway, how come they're making the driveway so wide? That's a question, too, you know? And then how about trucks coming in there, like for the feed? Who's going to deliver the feed? You're going to have trucks backing in and out of there? That's a dangerous situation.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions for this gentleman?
I'm just, I have a concern.
Hold on. Mr. Mills?
I just wanted on record that you said in your statement that you were told one thing, and there's something else coming up. Now, I want that, I'd like to have that clarified, of what you were told, and now there's something else happening.
I was told that there was just going to be 10 dogs housed there. The guy says there's going to be rare that they had any large animals there.
Why would they say that there's just going to be 10 dogs? Pinpoint 10 large dogs?
Because they got 10, there's 10 stalls in there to house these dogs. And there's one, another building that they built out back, supposed to be for the dog that can't get along with the dogs that's inside.
It's something we need to get clarified, who said what.
Well, we're not going to get in a match with going back and forth with each other, because we can clarify a lot of this in our motion, and how it's approved and all like that, instead of getting a hassle here tonight.
Okay, I got one more question for him.
You got one other question?
On record, would you be satisfied with a limit of animals on that particular farm?
No, I don't want it at all.
Is that all you got, Mr. Mills?
Thank you.
You good? Thank you, sir, for coming up and giving your position. I don't see anybody else coming to the mic, so I assume that there's nobody else would like to speak against this project. So thereby, having said that, we'll be taking it up next week at our business meeting. Thank you all for attending, and we, the Planning Commission and staff, certainly apologize what went on tonight. It was beyond our means and all like that, so we thank you all for coming. We're going to continue with our meeting, but if you're going to leave, and everybody's going to leave, we're going to wait till you get out till we finish our meeting. If you all have something to talk about, please go outside the door. We got to finish our meeting for tonight. Sarah, I'm just going to continue because we don't have any more comments much, so I'm going to go ahead and try to finish. Seeing no more public comment come up, I'm going into commissioner comments. Any commissioners, including Mr. Servon? Mark, does Servon have any, he's gone. Okay. Seeing that, any other business before the commission? Seeing none, I will then entertain a motion.
Abuse.
Have a motion in a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
I still adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, still adjourn.
Absolutely.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, and see you all next week.